All right. Good evening to this evening's budget work session. As you probably know, normally on Mondays at 5:30 we have city council meetings. But we had four meetings already this month, and so there's never a city council meeting on the fifth Monday or five meetings in one month. So today we chose to do a budget work session, so that's what we're here for. Madam Clerk, would you please read the row?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
May I approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. As I mentioned, this is a budget work session. It's not planned for public input during this hour. This is council's first time seeing these documents that we have before us. There was an outline that was laid out last week with regards to how we're going to move forward when we're going to have our public input meetings. I think we may have a little bit more information about that tonight as far as location for those. And then there's also on the website, an opportunity for people to participate at this early point in time. So, Michelle, could you please proceed to let us know what we have right now?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Appreciate your patience with us today. As you know, we've been kind of scrambling to get pieces together. So what we have prepared for you tonight, and the council all has hard copies, and I apologize to everyone else, but I was having technical difficulties with the copier, so I don't have copies for you yet. This is simply what we have referred to in the past as the base budget. So all that you're seeing in front of you right now is the personnel increases that were required by the contracts and non-bargain agreements, those kind of things. So there will be future options coming to you. This does not reflect any changes in revenues. It does not reflect any additional needs requests to provide current level of service. You might remember that from prior years, that we generally talk about that a little bit later, because I get a lot of questions about how much our contractual increases cost us. So we put this together just simply to show you what those increases are. And I'm gonna kind of jump ahead if I can here, and we're gonna start from the bottom, maybe, and work our way up. Because I know everybody's anxious to see the bottom line.
Ready where you bring it up on here?
Oh. They're not showing up on those screens, I don't...
It's up there.
It's over here.
Yep. Sorry about that, Wayne Hill.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
I'll get that down.
There.
All right. So the tax rate that we started out with, from fiscal '17, if you'll remember, seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents roughly, seventeen point six zero five two two. We did have some property tax valuation growth this year. So when we factor in the increased property tax valuations and the rollback replacement, the rate right now with just the base would be seventeen dollars fifty-two cents, seventeen fifty-two four seven three.
Michelle, where are you at?
I jumped to your last page.
Your last page?
I said I'd start from the bottom. Go to row 172 on page five.
Oh, you're not on page eight?
I'm sorry, I forgot. Those last three pages show you the tax changes for each type of property, a home, a business, a multi-residential, so we want to be on page five. In my head, that's the last page, but it's not. Has everybody found about row 172? So if you go to column F on there, that shows you what the fiscal '17 levy rate is for the year that we're in today. And if you jump over to column I, that's the levy rate that these costs would result in. And that's all it is. As you all know, we have a lot of work to do yet, so this is not the final levy rate by any means, but this is just so that we can all gain an understanding of what the personnel costs changes are. And it's about $500,000. Some of that, you see an amount down here, about $523,000. Little bit of that increase goes to some special funds that we have. The special voted-in library levy gets a little bit of an increase, because they get twenty-seven cents per thousand of all the valuation. So they get increased budget because of increased value. Same thing with the grout levy. So what I call the city operating fund share is about half a million right now. And you can see that column E, total property tax levy under row 72 for this year was forty million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand. It would be projected to be forty million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand at this level.
So and that's the $524,000 for the salary increases?
Salary increases, plus again, a little bit of increase for the library special levy fund and the grout fund. Yep.
How much was new evaluations?
You can see, and what I gave you on here was just the new eight-ten levy increase, about $330,000. Actually, your levy increase would even be more...
Two cents.
Yeah, I'll have to think about that for a minute. I'll get back to you on that one. Because we're actually, this is proposing a reduced levy, so the valuation increase is covering that. No, so that. So for a residential property, if we stopped right now, you would be looking at a .8 percent increase in property taxes to fund that. And flip down to commercial, it's another reduction, 1.35 percent. They've been getting reductions for a number of years now because of the change in the Industrial will see the same percentage reduction as commercial. And then if you remember, we have a new multi-residential category that started last year. So they're really starting to see a reduction. They have a reduction of almost 10 percent in taxes for fiscal '18 because of the change in the rollback for them. If you remember, multi-residential is gonna come down from being, just like a commercial property, which was taxed at 100 percent in fiscal '14, and this year it's gonna be at eighty-two and a half. So we've lost nearly 20 percent of our value on those properties. Fortunately for Waterloo, that's not a huge amount of value. I think it was about 50 million, if I remember correctly, on the property valuations that we looked at a couple of weeks ago. So...
Are we counting on the rollback replacement for next year?
In this version, we are counting on it.
In this one, but next year?
Let's see.
Yeah, but you know, that is, we're gonna have to keep a close eye on the legislature and...
Every Monday.
Think about what we might do here. But this does assume that we would continue to receive the backfill that the legislature promised us when they put in the 90 percent rollback. It would be nice if they take that away, that they also reverse the rollback, but I know that won't happen, so... And the other thing...
Is that about 2 million, is that what it is?
You can see that on about row 174-ish somewhere. Oops. Can't control my mouse.
About 1 million.
One point, is it 1.35 or...
Well, the total is that 1.7 on row 172. One million, 736,003.03 would be the projected full amount for fiscal '18 based on this levy rate. That changes as we change the levy rate.
But that's if they don't do anything which they sure are gonna...
Correct. We don't know that. We've had...
I wouldn't bet they weren't.
I probably wouldn't bet it, except there are some pretty influential people at the state level who've said that they're going to honor their commitment to us, so we'll see if they're able to. It's difficult when there isn't enough money to go around, and we certainly all understand that, so that remains to be seen. But that 1.7 million, if that goes away, that's a pretty large hole to fill for us. The other thing that I'm gonna point out, because I think people will ask, I left things the same as the certified budget last year, and if you remember, we agreed to use $500,000 of our general reserves for this '17 budget year. So that's still in this '18. We're still projecting to use, it would be another half million if we use it this year, which I hope we don't.
Where's that, what line was that?
That is on row 140. And you can see it in columns H and I. I can't tell you what page that is, because I'm working on the screen, but...
Page one.
Page four. Thanks, page four.
And how much was that, 500,000?
Yes, 500,000.
And the... The... The cent on the levy is what, 22...
That...
22, 531 or where is that?
It's actually more than that this year. I think it's nine, and that's on row 153, so 22,939. Mayor, do you wanna help me with that math?
So without that, that would take the current 17.52, we're looking up to about 1720, 74 somewhere.
That sounds about right.
So you'd add another 21.79 to the 17.52, and that'll also be some fluctuation too with that same number, if it goes up or...
Right. Yep. So what other questions do you have tonight? I don't, we can go through it by category, line, or you can study it on your own.
Michelle, real quickly, so what we have in here is just the cost of the different positions. We have the salary increases for each one of those. We have, the same as last year, have the levy in there at 500, 500 you said, or 500?
You said fund balance?
Yeah, the fund balance.
500,000, yes.
And so with the, based upon the evaluation generated and the salaries, we're at about 17.52 with all of that just right now on the base.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. We found out today, we may have a little correction from the county, so even our valuations might change. We will, gonna finalize that decision tomorrow.
So if we start at public safety on the first page, the change is 1.03. That's how much they've gone up percentage-wise.
Are you looking at that total category?
Yeah, I'm looking at total public safety. It's item line 27 on here.
I just had to get...
All the way to the right, percent change is 1.03. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right.
And one thing I would note in there, the state, I think when we think public safety, we often think police and fire, and we don't go any further than that. But this worksheet is sorted the same way that the state budget forms are categorized. So that means we include building inspections in there. We used to include animal control before we changed how we funded animal control. So that helps quite a bit. Building inspections generally, internally, we generally think of building inspections fees covering the cost of planning and zoning, but planning and zoning is in the community development category on here, so it's just a little bit different way of thinking about it.
Yeah. So police, fire, building, ambulatory, and animal control, but animal control is to another count.
Right. Yes.
The state as public safety. Public works, there's a change of 1.58, and that's parking sidewalks, airport, meth, central garage, the motor pool.
Where'd animal control go?
Animal control, remember that one?
That's being funded out of the sanitation fund now, so we'll be talking about that later, when we hit sanitation.
So it's listed under the state as such, but the funding can come from a myriad of other sources.
I probably should've deleted those rows from here, but I didn't get that done.
Health and social services, a change of 1.15 from last year with regards to salaries. Culture and arts, 0.07.
Down there?
Yep.
Yes. Pretty small increase, 40...
Community development, which we know is federally funded.
Not many of these act to...
I forgot.
So this includes planning...
Okay.
Which, and our city property management, so there's just a few things in there that really are property tax-funded.
Right, okay.
And then we get to our general government functions.
And that's general government, that's a reduction?
Increase, I think, of the 197.
City clerks.
I'm sorry, reduction. It's a reduction, 15 percent.
There you go.
Okay. Goes up to the right row.
What was that, $95,000 increase for human resources?
Director.
That is, yes, for the anticipated having a full-time director.
Activities.
Michelle?
Yes.
Today, a citizen asked, as far as our ambulance service is concerned, is this a losing proposition for us to run an ambulance? I don't know if that would show this in here.
Well, it shows most of the picture. It does not quite show the full picture. So if you would go up to row, and I'm gonna get there in a minute, rows 21 and 22 show ambulance, but what's not reflected on here is the municipal police and fire pension allocated to that activity, so...
I mean, the fee that we charge for our ambulance service, we don't always recruit all that money, do we? I mean, the insurance companies...
We don't. And you know, Chief Trellard can certainly talk to that more than I can, but Medicare and Medicaid, you're locked into what they will pay you.
Yes, that's right.
So it doesn't matter how much we spend, they're gonna pay their locked-in amount. So you can see that on here, we are subsidizing that. However, keeping our ambulances does help us keep more locations open. There's a lot of factors involved in that. Nothing is a simple decision, I don't think. One thing I would mention about fire, if you look at row 20, the Fire Safer Grant, that grant does expire approximately in October of this year. So I've estimated the amount of time we can fund that position, and since this is the base level, it does not add the remaining cost of that to property taxes. If you choose to do that, we will add that in a later version. So that's something to keep in mind. And that is the only grant funded that would potentially be shifting to property taxes. Safer Grant was different this time in that we do not have a requirement to continue it. So one thing that you can see out of our total levy of 17.52, $11.81 of that is for the public safety category. I know I've seen already Call the Couriers that, gosh, every time you talk about your budget, you only talk about not filling public safety positions. And the reason that it seems that way is just because they are such a large part of the property tax-funded budget. It's very difficult to make meaningful changes to our levy rate without somehow affecting something in public safety. And that does include a net profit from building inspections coming out of that, if that makes sense?
Michelle, can you reiterate the schedule? Do you have that document with you?
Yeah, I'm hoping I'm gonna pull it up. I think...
Do you memorize it?
Yeah, should have, but I have a lot of things rolling around in my head today. We're expecting to have department meetings, hopefully February 8th, and again on Saturday, February 11th. Those are probably the next biggest meetings we have, and hopefully we will have updates on Monday. We're general updates on the Monday work sessions. We have to publish around February 17th. We can maybe move that back a few days, but in order to keep this moving and be able to file it on time by March 15th, we are asking for any suggestions from council and the public. We want to put a deadline on that of February 23rd, so that we have time to calculate them and work with them and analyze the merits of them. Because when we have the hearing, the hearing is scheduled for March 9th, and when we do that, we would like to be able to be done that night, so we have enough time to do all the paperwork and file with the state by the 15th. Especially because I'm short a person, that's gonna take more time between those dates than I have needed in the past to get that done.
And I wanna note too, we received an email from a citizen with regards to trying to structure the way we do some of our public meetings. Last year, we probably had about, during this time, I don't know, 15, 15, 20 different times.
I think I counted at least 22, and then plus there were some at council meetings, so we were probably close to 30 public meetings.
So a suggestion by one of the citizens, in taking a look at what another community was doing, was to have just a couple of days, maybe one during the evening, but also have one for departmental head presentations on a Saturday, so people can get to the meeting, they can see what's going on. So the one that's scheduled for February 8th will be held directly here in council chambers, and the one on Saturday, and we'll get that time to you in the morning, will be held at the Center for the Arts to give people an opportunity to come there and listen to. So trying to work out the technology thing to get it done, but we wanted to make sure we offered it off away from here to try to do that. So we're gonna split up departments half and half. It'll be a lot of work to do in a very short time with the office that has short staff, but we'll do our best to try to get that done. To remind all of you as well, you can go to the City of Waterloo website, and you can see, you can put in comments about the budget as well, so let us know what you're thinking. And the schedule we gave out last week, is that currently uploaded, so that citizens know when our work sessions are? Is that uploaded right now?
It may not be. We'll get that done tomorrow.
We'll upload. So if you wanna see what the schedule is, timeframes, go to the cities, to the website to get this information, upload it tomorrow by noon, and you'll be able to get it, and you'll also have a schedule that will be there for you too, so you can make sure, you can be there and present as well.
Michelle, do you mind if we send you our requests, our scenarios now? I mean, you don't have to respond to them now, but then you got them in your queue.
I would ask for your patience with that, because I am still working on compiling some things, and I think it's, you're gonna be happier if I get those base things done, and then we start talking scenarios, but you can certainly send them to me.
Which way do you want us to do it?
I'm fine with you sending them to me, as long as you understand I'm not gonna probably kick them right back right away.
I understand that.
But we'll, yes, we'll get, that's fine. Yep.
All right. Another questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, last year, one of the questions that was raised was when we would receive the mayor's budget, and when, is that, I don't see that in here. When would, should the council expect your budget?
Well, what I was hoping to do is something like last year, when all of you submit, we'll have to have a published budget, of course, but I wanna take a look at what folks have. You may have some ideas or some ways to generate revenue we didn't think of, so I wanna have all of that stuff and try to massage it together and make sure we at least try to put together something that represents the council, council staff. So when would that be, the March 9th or before then? We'll have to come up with a public question.
At the very latest, it will be March 9th. Hopefully, we can work on it, have it a little sooner than that. It will depend on what kind of suggestions we have and how much work that takes to finesse those.
So, you know, a little bit different scenario than last year when it comes to taking a look at these. We made some adjustments. Last year, we've seen a little bit of growth, but we definitely need to adhere and be coming up with different ideas and get those into, Michelle and I, so we can try to incorporate your thoughts.
And in answering that question, I just wanna make sure that we don't have that kind of scenario like last year, when, you know, it's the day before and people are wondering where the mayor's budget is. You know, if the council would have that, you know, several days before, it sure would be appreciated, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And I think we did, what, February 23rd for councils, and then March 9th is the hearing date. So we will be working earnestly to try to get there. Now, I don't know, maybe it is a published, but I don't know, but I wanna make sure that I get your thoughts somewhere incorporated, and then work those together and come back with something for you to take a look at. So we'll move fast on that. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So Michelle, as far as positions, positions to be moved from maybe one department to another to help the budget, would that be the kind of thing we would see on February 8th? As far as, you know, in the past, we've gone through department by department, how many employees they have last year, how many we project they're gonna have next year. Would that be what we'd be seeing on the 8th?
We at least have what's been proposed and submitted by the departments at this point. Any future suggested changes aren't in there today. I don't know, it's possible some of those would be incorporated by the 8th, but I, what we know, we have in there, yes, so they would be.
Okay, thanks.
So February 8th and February 11th will be departmental overviews. We're asking departments to have PowerPoint presentations, for them to present information about their departments, to talk about accomplishments, and also, in addition to that, not on the PowerPoint, but take a look at some of the questions that were just asked for staffing and dollar-wise, what they're looking at as well.
Michelle, I don't know if it's been a year yet, but we turned over our parking operation to...
operation to the, what's the name of that company?
Republic.
Yeah, Republic. Did, um, does this show that that was a good idea? Did, uh, our costs go down by...
It's hard to just look at the numbers and determine whether something's been a good idea or not. I, I think we need to wait for the conversation with them. I mean, you can see that we are, unfortunately, at this level, because this is our personnel changes only, there's no changes in here for Republic at this point. That may be coming in a later version, and so we'll want to talk about it then, I think.
Has it been a year that they've...
It, it has, like, August of, I want to say fifteen?
I don't remember.
So, I think, because I think it had already switched for the year, partly during the year ended June of sixteen, so we have had that year, not quite a full year, and now we're in, we're in our first really full year.
Okay.
So, there's, we're really still getting started with that.
And we're also hoping for the, there was a question by someone with regards to CIP and where we're at with that. We're hoping to get that up and get that to you within the next couple of weeks, so you can have that, you can talk about it, look at it, take a look at projects, see what's going on with that as well, so a lot of information at one time.
Yes.
It's very fast-paced.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor, because that's another thing to keep in the back of your mind. This leaves the debt service levy at the same dollars that it was last year. I'm going to get to the right row, but I went right by it again, as I'm talking. So, that, that's why it's important to decide what we want to do with the CIP now, to figure out how many, how much your bonds we're going to sell that we're going to have to start repaying in fiscal eighteen. Because the CIP that we're talking about will be the bonds we sell in this June, June of seventeen, that we have to start repaying in eighteen. And, and I know, I've heard, there's always talk, we always have many, many more needs in the capital improvements programming than we can afford to do. We generally cut that. We've been issuing approximately eight million a year, and I'm going to just take the tech works out of that and sit over here for a minute. We generally issue about eight million a year, um, and we often cut the requests in half or more than in half to get them crammed down to eight million a year. But, if we increase the size of those bond issues, then we're going to have to pay back more debt, which is going to increase the debt service levy. And especially, the Federal Reserve has started ticking interest rates up. It may be a little more expensive for us in terms of the interest we have to pay going forward. We've been in a really unusual cycle for quite a few years now with extremely low interest rates on our bonds, and that's likely not to continue to be quite as beneficial to us.
You know, to reiterate, I know there's folks that have some, wanted to speak, but this was only a budget work session. February sixth is the council meeting, and we have oral presentations at that time, so if you would be able to come back then and voice your concerns, uh, you'll be listened to, so, just welcome.
Motion for adjournment.
Sure.
Motion to adjourn with the second on the favor.
Aye.